Hey, good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Bay County Commission. Could you please take the roll, ma'am?
Fox?
Pierce.
Krieger?
Yes.
Bickig?
Here.
Coonan?
Here.
Radke?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Please stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we ask that you grant to this Board of Commissioners and all those in authority the patience and understanding to work together for the good of all people. In your holy name we ask this. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Firstly, on the agenda is a minutes from, we'll try to do them all at once unless somebody has an injection, from 12/28/21, 1/322, 1/1122, and 1/1822.
Support?
Any comment? None? Call on favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Next will be citizen input. Anyone from the audience that would like to speak, please step forward, please state your name, and away you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, one in each.
Oh, could you please sign your name on there? I think there's something up there to put your name on there. That'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Executive, and Department Heads, I am Glenn Rowley. I'm the supervisor of beautiful Bangor Township. I am joined today by trustee Tracy Cook. She is also the president of the Kakaulin River Watershed Association. If you do not recognize me or haven't met me, I'm the one that's often on the wrong side of a television camera during flooding events in Bay City, which is a topic for which I come to you today. In recent years, we have felt the full wrath of flooding events in our area, so much, in fact, we were able to spearhead a flooding symposium with local leaders, state representatives, emergency management personnel, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Congressman Kildee's office, and Senator Debbie Stabenow herself in attendance. During that meeting, we asked for federal assistance. And I'm very pleased to announce, last fall, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers alerted us to the fact that $570,000 was earmarked in President Biden's budget for flood control on the Kakaulin River. This is huge news, and I'm very excited for the progress that we can make. This will incorporate a few phases. It will remove the old railroad bridge supports, and it will also dredge to the end of the river where the settlement collects and can cause flooding. This will greatly lessen the peril of flooding, not just for the fine folks of Bangor Township, but the entire county, as it affects all of our residents at some capacity. That's the great news. The bad news is, per the Water Resource Development Act of 1986, work performed on a waterway by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers requires a 50% cost share. There's a copy of that in the packet I provided you with. After engineering and development work, the cost sharing would be approximately $400,000. With numerous drains discharging in the Kakaulin River, and I believe that number is 10, I have reached out to the Drain Commissioner's office for assistance. He said that he cannot help. Bangor Township's ARPA funds are just over $1 million, and all of that's going to be used to replace much-meeter drinking water lines. And asking the residents that live along that waterway for a special assessment for something that is needed for the entire county just doesn't seem correct. I've watched every one of your meetings, and I have seen the parade of suitors asking for a share of your ARPA funds. Please allow me to stand before you and get in line with my handout, not for me, not for the residents of beautiful Bangor Township, but for the entire county, as flooding affects all of us. I don't want to discount the merits of any of those that have requested previously in front of me. But here is a sound infrastructure project that was sent from the President of the United States of America. As you consider where you will allocate your ARPA funds, please consider this particular investment in infrastructure and flood prevention. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have; otherwise, I welcome the opportunity to discuss this with you further. I also realize this is public input, and this is a one-way street, but if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer. I thank you for the opportunity and for all that you do.
Wait, wait, wait. What are you? I can't. That's right. Never mind.
We can't ask questions now.
I welcome the opportunity to sit down to discuss later.
Sorry. I know better.
Thank you all for all that you do.
Thank you.
I understand.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
You could've. Yeah.
Not my job.
Okay. We'll move on to petitions and communications. First on this is Ryan Tarrant. I don't think he's here, but, so if he's not, then we'll go right to the Community Health Center presentation. And Mr. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I want to speak on a proposal with the ARPA funding in regards to a community health and human services center. If you recall, and I imagine that you've heard this over and over again, the main goals of ARPA funding is to make something that's transformational, impactful, that solves problems for consumers and providers, benefits those most impacted by the pandemic, but also prepares us for future pandemics, and it is related to the current pandemic as it In these 20, well, 23, almost 24 months that we've been coping with the issues with the pandemic, we've really had to deal with three major problems here in the community. The first is that there are a substantial number of local residents that just don't have the resources. Sometimes it's material resources, like food or housing, but more often than not, it's things like transportation, health insurance, having an adequate medical provider, and they cannot access services. We've got a really disjointed system here within the community, and as much as we try to work together as providers, whether it's medical providers or throughout the community, human services providers, it's truly a fragmented system that is very difficult to navigate. In addition to that, collaboration that we've had amongst medical and human services providers is very challenging, basically due to the restrictions that we've had on our facilities, and we continue to have on our facilities, and the difficulties in sharing information. And a good example of this, of what's happening today, is restrictions on facilities are some of the restrictions that are still taking place at Bay Regional Medical Center, because they're, or, excuse me, McLaren Bay Region, because they're still having to deal with, as well as other providers, the realities of the pandemic. And that means that they've got to constantly test people that are coming in for services. They have to make sure that people are screened out if they are potentially positive. They have a number of people that do enter their facilities negative, but then end up positive, and services have had to been cut back pretty substantially. In addition to that, too, we've done a lot of work in providing vaccines, and we're starting to ramp up treatments throughout the community, but this is no easy task as well, because we've got to work together. It's not as if the hospital can fully take this on, it's not as if the health department can fully take this on. It really, truly is a measure of collaboration that is necessary amongst all the medical providers here in the community. And then finally, along those lines, too, the pandemic has demonstrated that the health department facility in and of itself, and some of the county facilities, continues to act. We have lack of adequate space for clinical administrative functions. So not just like office space. We have a number of people still working from home that are doing contact tracing and things like that. But if you recall, in the early days of the pandemic, we tried to all cram into the conference room at the health department, which is not the healthiest thing to do, nor is it really designed to be the emergency operations center. But the emergency operations center at Central Dispatch is woefully inadequate for the challenges that we have. In addition to that, our clinical space was woefully inadequate for some of the different clinics that we have, and even when we consider in the future expanding clinical services to also potentially include treatment, we're hampered by just the lack of space that we have currently. And it's not just an easy fix, as if we can go to the community center, because the community center is fully operational now, and most other places within the community are fully operational, in comparison to what they were 12 months ago. So our proposal today is to come forward with this idea of a community health and human services center that is a collaborative and community-based project that's comprehensive, it's high-quality, that brings high-quality health and social services to county residents in a single place. Instead of creating a project that's dependent on multiple sources to say itself, we plan to coordinate care amongst existing providers, bring them all together in one location, so that it not only makes it easier to collaborate and bring more effective services to the Bay County residents, but it makes it easier on Bay County residents to obtain those services. You might, whoops. So you might ask, why is this any different than anything that's happened before? Well, this is an innovative concept, and I challenge anyone to find, in the state of Michigan, even throughout the United States, any single location where a concentrated effort is made to really provide all of these different types of services. This is a partnership between public, what we're proposing here is a partnership between public and nonprofit and private providers, so it's not just governmental providers coming in. We want to also see if we can get private providers to be part of this concept, too. What we're proposing is a Mayo Clinic for public health, behavioral health, community health services, and other community services, with providers working together to meet the growing needs of Bay County. So let me speak a few minutes about the Mayo Clinic and why we've chosen that analogy. If you are familiar with the Mayo Clinic, it's not just one building, it's actually a full set, a complex of buildings, actually a full set of complex of different hospitals that work together. It was created in the late 1860s and throughout the 1800s, first under the auspices of the Sisters of St. Francis, who worked with the Mayo Brothers after a devastating tornado went through Rochester, Minnesota. And they worked together, and they put together a hospital, or a series of hospitals, and other facilities, that would bring everything together under one specific location to meet the needs of the residents of Rochester, Minnesota. And the thing that was remarkably different about that was that the methodology there was that it just didn't treat patients as commodities to be traded back and forth between the different providers, but it was intended to and continues to be an opportunity or a place where providers meet to work on the holistic needs of the patients in and of themselves. And as you can tell, Mayo Clinic is one of the, probably the most world-renowned institution of its kind like that. And while we're not necessarily presenting the prospect of building a new hospital, if we can bring providers together, like the Sisters of St. Francis and the Mayo Brothers did, we really can do something that's truly revolutionary for this community. So we're going to talk about, for the most part, the health and human services complex, but we're also going to take some time to talk about two other additional projects. Common intake project, and I've got Nicole Luzak from United Way, Gretchen Wagner from Bay-Aronak ISD, that will fill in more details on that, and we will briefly touch on the need for a new electronic medical record to help us solidify our efforts. So why do we need a project like this? I mentioned before that there were a number of people that have substantial difficulties in accessing services, and I'll give you three examples. And these are kind of amalgamations of real people that we've seen throughout the last 10, 15, 20 years, but more especially in this last year of the pandemic. One, we've got Sarah, 25-year-old, single working mother. She's got multiple jobs, but she's got unreliable transportation. She can't get from here to there very easily. She's got to use the bus system. The bus system only works on a finite period of time, but she's got all the responsibilities, too. She's got a child that's disabled with multiple health issues. She's got to try to find providers that will be able to help her child with those multiple health issues. And she suffers from PTSD from a previous abusive relationship. So not only does she have medical needs, but she's got social service needs, and she's got behavioral health needs. There's Bob, a 72-year-old disabled and on assistance. He has no immediate family in the area, he's basically on his own, he's got no transportation, he's diabetic, and has no reliable medical provider, because he lacks adequate coverage. He, too, has problems obtaining medical, good medical coverage from a provider, and he's got multiple other confounding issues that are keeping him from getting adequate coverage. And then finally, we've got Carlos, a 35-year-old husband and father of three. He works multiple jobs. He's doing pretty good right now, but he's got, he's recovering from substance abuse issues, and he's finally got a job, but he's got a job with no healthcare, no health insurance, doesn't have a provider. All of these things help to contribute to the ever-growing problems that we have in providing services within our community. And as I've said before, 50% of our population here in Bay County is dependent upon some type of public medical program, whether it's Medicaid, Medicare, or what have you. And less and less providers are accepting these funding streams. We don't find a lot of doctors that are like, hey, I got to get to Bay County to make more money on Medicaid. It just doesn't happen. We don't find a lot of doctors that are really enthusiastic about treating seniors with Medicare, because it doesn't pay very well. So we've got problems with that. We've got, we really need to make it easier to obtain and care services for the greatest in need. We've got to make it easier, too, for the providers to work together, so that they can give people the best care possible. So this project proposes to respond to those community needs, especially during the times of a health-related emergency like today. And we want to use this opportunity to provide Bay County residents an effective place to go, one place to go for all their health and human services needs. So before I get on to more details of the project, we have already started to begin to talk to some other potential providers and partners in the community for this, and there's a listing of them there. These are not necessarily organizations that are fully committed and willing to bring resources to the table, but they are looking for us to get that commitment of some resources so that we can further leverage resources, maybe from their own reservoirs, or maybe from state and federal sources, or even private sources as well. I'm not going to speak to each one of these organizations. There, some are more committed than others at this point, but they all, in essence, have agreed to support the project and would like to see it to its fruition. So one of the common questions that we have with this, and we've encountered, is, you want a new building? That's great. It'd be really great if we could build a new building, but is that going to be enough of what you're asking for, to build a new building? Or can you just renovate something? But even more so, why don't you just, why don't we just give more money to providers and expand services, say for mental health, dental, and others? And most organizations are not necessarily, right now, in need of more funding to expand services. Most organizations really don't have the capacity to expand services, because they're dealing with several problems, including lack of providers. You know, providers are not going to stay for resources if we give them just a three-year allocation that disappears. And even if a project that only needs funds is ready to implement today, we've got to find a way to make that sustainable after three years, after that initial allocation. So our goal here is really to build a sustainable and long-lasting partnership amongst providers in the community. So why is it good for the community? Number one, first and foremost, any construction will create more jobs within the community, but even more so, to enhance the ability to provide services can create further expansion of employment within this community. It enhances innovation amongst different providers, and really sets us apart from any other community in the state of Michigan. If you recall, the Bay Community Health Clinic, which was a partnership between the Bay County Health Department and Saginaw Valley State University, won many accolades and many awards, but it was entirely funded on grant sources. It was an innovative project, and it did help people out, but it really wasn't able to further sustain those, the necessary funding and the necessary resources in the short term. We would like to bring it back, but we know that we've got to do things differently. And one of the things that we've got to do differently is we've got to bring more providers to the table and enhance collaboration amongst those providers, because that was the key element. It wasn't just the health department is expanding services, it is the health department is helping to expand services in conjunction with other providers in the community, whether it was Saginaw Valley State University, whether it was Bay-Aronak Behavioral Health, whether it was McLaren Bay Region, or any other number of providers within the community. I talked briefly, too, about how this will help keep providers for the long term, so that we can help keep down those high-cost and low-reimbursement issues that we're dealing with with public insurance. It's going to help improve the infrastructure in the community, and it's going to be a long-term investment that you're all going to be remembered for. And finally, most importantly, it helps people in need. So let's get down to enlightened self-interest, as they say, and why is this good for the county in and of itself? So committing ARPA resources is going to leverage resources from other community providers. The shared cost and the ownership reduces the county's overall cost. The open space at the current health department facility, if we're able to obtain a new facility and expand our services, will allow other Bay County departments and agencies to access much-needed space. For example, the courts, we all know the slight limitations that they have, whether it's criminal defense, even the emergency operations center that I mentioned before. And finally, it enhances our ability to adequately respond to future pandemics and disasters. Okay. I'm going to talk briefly about common coordination. I talked about a physical site, but we also need to do a number of different things within the community to help bring providers together, because we're not going to be able to bring every provider together in one single location. But there are a number of different things that we can do to make it easier on people that are seeking help. I'm going to briefly talk about our common intake proposal, and then I'm going to invite Gretchen and Nicole to come up and elaborate upon this. As I've discussed before, one of the most difficult, challenging things that I've seen in my position here as the health officer and working in public health is the sheer frustration and problems that people have in getting the resources in the time that they need. If you lose your job, or you lose your health insurance, or, God forbid that you say you lose all of them at once, and you are truly in need of getting help, not only do you've got to go to DHS and fill out forms, you've got maybe to go to the United Way and fill out some forms, or you've got to go to the health department and fill out some forms, or you've got to go to Behavioral Health, or the Mid-Michigan Community Action Agency, or even a local church. Quite often, you are filling out the same application 18 times, and you've got to find a way to get from your home to those locations within business hours and fill out all of that information, and then wait upon the bureaucracy to determine whether or not that you are eligible for resources or not. When I've got people that come in, whether it's to family planning, or for immunizations, or any other type of service, and WIC, and they've got to fill out a form, and it takes them two hours to fill out that information, that is challenging in and of itself. I thought that filling out the FAFSA form for my son, who's graduating this year, was a challenge, but I am often reminded that that challenge is repeated in complexity and difficulty several times a day by people in need throughout this community. And it's a lot to ask for people who are struggling. Maybe that, you know, they're struggling with the trauma of losing their job, or losing their medical coverage, or maybe they're dealing with a major illness at this point in time, or maybe they're dealing with the trauma of an injury or an assault, or something like that. So we want to be able to bring those things together, regardless of where a community organization is, and have one common, single intake process. So I'm going to let Nicole and Gretchen speak to the specifics of that, and I will...
Quick point, Joel. They have one more stop in there, the free clinic in the interim until they can get their health insurance, because that's what we see a lot of. People have lost their job, don't have insurance, they come to the free clinic until they can get on some other assistance program.
Exactly.
One more stop.
All right. So this proposal really came to us through the Human Services Collaborative Council, and it came to us from community partners, community agencies, about the need for us to really collaborate and work together, because, like Joel said, people are traveling from agency to agency to complete these applications, and there's also a hierarchy. So if I need help, I need to first go to Agency A, and then go to Agency B, and if I don't go to A, but I go to B first, now I have to go back. And again, like Joel said, you have people going from all of these places during working hours, when many of them are working multiple jobs or have trouble with transportation. So that was really a need that was brought to us. So we thought, we collaborated and thought about this common intake system, so really, and I know a lot of people say, but what about 2-1-1? And what we hear is 2-1-1 is great, but at-risk families need more than just a referral. We can see the referrals from 2-1-1, and we are working collaboratively with 2-1-1 on this project, so that's important to also note. But we don't know the true outcomes from you call 2-1-1, and you get the list of referrals, but we don't know what happens next, how many of those families truly go and get the support that they need. And so this common intake process really would support families and individuals in the county with getting their needs met. Ideally, also, we would look at what are the things that we're doing that are repetitive in the county that we can reduce, so there would be ways to save money, maybe only one agency is doing something versus three. And then finally, one of the outcomes that we'd eventually like to see is, so what's next? So you continually come for support through this system, but can I make that referral to the YWCA for the Getting Ahead Program? Thank you. And so those are some of the things that we're really hoping that something like this, that we anticipate something like this common community coordination process would assist in. And then, Nicole, if you want to talk about...
So we had demos done from different companies that offer platforms for this type of project in other communities. What essentially we found was 2-1-1 in southeastern Michigan is working with their United Way, and it was Bright Street Group, LLC, that brought the platform to them, but they actually created this. They piloted it in August, and it was based off a similar project in San Diego. But the platform that they built is integrated into all of the systems that already exist. So they're working with their healthcare system, which is Mid-Michigan down there, I believe they said, or Henry Ford. Either way, they are working with their healthcare system, they are working with all of their community partners, so the Salvation Army, the United Ways, anybody who offers that assistance with utilities, or rent, or mortgage, or the different things that people will come to us for. They go through, at the healthcare system level, through the social determinants of health, and they screen them for what other needs or referrals they would have, and then they can share out that data to all of those organizations at once in one system. The neat thing about this, and why we would like to duplicate what they're doing with this platform, is that it would not mean Salvation Army, Mid-Michigan Community Action, DHHS, United Way, all have to have another system to log into. It would actually, the technology cost of this would make it so that it integrates into their system that they're already using to offer these resources. So it's a great way to, like Joel said, you can't bring everybody into one building, but this at least helps us, because, I know, I mean, our staff, and we've talked at HSCC, obviously, a lot about it with the other organizations, we have staff that a person will call 2-1-1, they will get referrals, and like Gretchen was explaining, they'll call DHHS, they'll go there and fill out paperwork, they'll go to Salvation Army, they'll come to us, they might go in backwards order, because they don't know which one to call first. And then our staff spends time calling all of those other organizations to help coordinate. A lot of times, their bills are too much for one organization to cover. We all have caps on how much we can spend. We have utility bills that are coming at us, that's $3,000 to $6,000 right now. So we have to work with everybody else to kind of piecemeal it together, and that goes right now through emails, phone calls, all the back and forth. And that goes right now through emails, phone calls, all the back and forth, the client running back and forth, where this system would all be in one place. So, their, their platform just seemed to be the best fit for what we were looking for.
So, that would be the comedy, common community coordination piece that, in Joel's proposal.
So, the third component is an upgraded electronic medical record. Now, every provider in the United States is generally required to have some sort of electronic medical record, with the exception of the Nicholas Clinic, which doesn't have to comply because they're not accepting Medicaid, or Medicare, or any kind of health insurance. So, it's all done on paper. But one of the common problems that we've had throughout this pandemic, in the 23 months that we've had, is the ability to, to get information about people that have come down with COVID, so we can do adequate case investigation. And furthermore, one of the, the main difficulties, if you remember, if you recall, 12 months ago at this point in time, is that we had substantial issues with our electronic medical record in inputting the vaccine information. Because we've got to input it into there, and then it gets uploaded into what's called the MICR system, so that we've got a record for everyone. Our current electronic medical record has a number of limitations. And so, what we're looking to do is upgrade our, our current process, so that we can more effectively communicate with other providers, both within the community, whether it's McLaren Bay Region, or Covenant, or Ascension, or Mid-Michigan, and other different doctor's offices. We can't necessarily currently do that with our current system. And this will not, this problem will not cease when the pandemic is done, or over with, or, or subsides, because we still have a number of communicable diseases, more and more, that list is growing more and more each day that we're having to contend with, including tuberculosis, including STIs such as gonorrhea, and chlamydia, including other types of communicable disease, and other types of conditions that the Health Department needs to take action on. So, an upgrade in this area is necessary as well. So, what we are asking for at this point in time, for the Community Health and Human Services Center, is to reserve, for the county to commit, or the Board of Commissioners to commit, to reserve $9 million until the end of this year. So, that will allow us to formally procure partners with other organizations in the community, to leverage funds and resources from those potential partners, and be able to determine locations. So, we can come back with a location, say, "This is what we want to do," whether it's a renovation, or a new build, and, you know, we're going to have to have agreements, so we're going to have to come back once those agreements. But I can't go and talk to anyone if we haven't committed any kind of, any type of resources for this. Can't be just a wish, or a maybe. We actually have to have some sort of commitment to do so. And then, we're also asking to authorize allocation for the electronic medical record system, which is $60,000, and allocation for the common intake project, which is $300,000. So, to summarize, the Health and Human Services Center would solve space problems, especially clinical space within the community. It will improve a centralized location for the distribution of vaccines in response to other disasters and other services. We plan that, if possible, we'll have a training center there, so that we can not only train community providers, but also provide community and health education, especially diabetic education throughout the community. We want to be able to expand the delivery of services through those community partnerships, and we can do that in one setting at a potentially lower cost. And that potentially lower cost includes the maintenance of the Health Department facility. Our vision, obviously, is collaboration and efficiency between the Health Department and different providers. Coordination of care of patients, which is a ground very few concepts, as I mentioned before. Remember that, the concept of having a, a community-based Mayo Clinic here in Bay County that truly meets the needs of everyone here, whether or not that they may be on Medicaid, Medicare, or even, or have adequate insurance like Blue Cross and Blue Shield. But it brings everything into one specific location. So, on that, I will stop my presentation and take any questions if you have them.
Commissioner Krieger.
So, there's two agencies I'm involved with, the Free Clinic, the Helen Nicholas Clinic. So, I could see this rolling into this facility. We're out in Essexville, it's not a real central location, and I think there could be a transition for people to get their insurance, to get the Healthy Michigan, whatever. Because that's basically what we're doing right now, is if they're eligible for it, then we get them on it. The other one has been Michigan Community Action, they've been sort of bouncing around. I'm sure they would like a facility, maybe in this facility that we have, maybe, because they, they do a lot of the same work.
They were one of the first agencies in the community to respond, and we have a number of letters that I can forward on to you as well, in support of this. The CAMN Council is another organization that finds itself pretty soon without a location. And this would be an excellent place for them to be, because if they've got to do forensic examinations and counseling, this is an opportunity where they can not only have mental health counseling and those forensic examinations, but also to provide medical services all within one place.
They leverage a lot of grant money. The other thing is, I got two calls last week, and they weren't health ones, but there was like, somebody who was living in their car, and somebody whose utilities were going to get shut off. So, they had been around to call 2-1-1, and, you know, makes the rounds to all the places to see if there's money. And right now, there isn't a lot of money out there for utilities.
No.
And so, they were having a hard time. Finally, they did that up in Mid-Michigan Community Action.
Now, if you, if you know the system and how it works, there are a number of people that really can leverage that system and get their needs met. In fact, in our discussions with the City of Bay City, they've mentioned that there are some individuals that have never paid a, a utility bill. That is more the exception than the rule. The overwhelming majority of people that are seeking assistance need it immediately, and they don't know where to go.
And we see that in the Salvation Army too. But you can't throw everybody out because of the fat, few bad apples.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yeah, Joel, I, I kind of like the collaboration, and I think we all know there's a need for it, but we, we leverage $9 million. And how close are we to collaborating with anybody?
Well, there, I don't want to speak for anyone, and I don't want to give specifics out either. There are a number of organizations within the community that have said, "Yes, we will, we will, if you procure this site, or this proposed concept, and the facility is big enough, we will be a part of it." That includes at least one medical provider, one major medical provider here in Bay County. It could mean other medical providers as well, and it includes at least two social service organizations too.
And then, is it a site other than the existing Health Department?
Yes. One of the, the proposals, or the discussions in the past few months have been, "Well, why don't you just build on top of the Health Department?" Which, in theory, is great, but then you, in order to do that, you've got to pretty much dislocate the, the entire HVAC system for the, the Health Department and the courts complex, plus the boiler system's on the second floor, plus all the disruption that's going to happen within the parking lot of the Health Department and the courts complex, which is at a premium in and of itself. And when court trials really start to get going again, as they did back in October, November, you drive by the Health Department, and all of the spaces are filled on any given day.
And then, any prospective purchase of property comes back to us, correct?
Yes. And one of the, while we're not, we have no intention to be anyone's landlord, so to speak. It could be a thing of maybe the county purchases the property, or it could be a situation where there is a joint acquisition of property, kind of like what the Bay City Police Department and the Sheriff's Department have within the Law Enforcement Center. It could be a whole variety of different things. What we're looking to do here is reduce the cost overall for everyone. And at first, be able to use these ARPA funds as, as kind of a, like, a pot of seed money, that maybe we can go to the state of Michigan, that maybe we can go to some of the, the private foundations here in the area, maybe we can go to some of the other organizations, maybe it's even federal money, or maybe it's a combination of all, that we can really build this, this community, or this, this complex and this, this center to the greatest extent possible.
Commissioner Fox.
Yeah, Joel, so can you maybe simplify this a little bit for me? So, if we go to Sarah, one of your examples, Sarah, the 25-year-old single mother of three, who you referenced medical, social services, and mental health, can you tell me, like, today, how would you address that?
Okay, so let's say that...
And then, post-project, if this were to go, how would that look?
That's an excellent question. So, let's say that Sarah, she's got the kid with the disability, and let's say that, you know, the child is on Children's Special Healthcare Program. That's a Health Department-run program for children that are disabled, and it really provides medical benefits to those children. Let's say that that child has type 1 diabetes, and has cystic fibrosis too. So, pretty serious case there. But, you know, Sarah's like, she's bouncing around, she, she may have lived in one location for six months, maybe she moved out of county for another six months and then came back. Like I said, her job is kind of tenuous, she doesn't have, she doesn't have a real strong foothold as far as having permanent roots here. But she's trying to access the services, and she's trying to get services for her child in addition to, you know, getting counseling for, for the trauma that she's had. Now, as a parent, she's probably going to make a choice. The kid's going to come first, his medical needs are probably going to come first. But she's got to be able to take care of herself, and maybe that she's got to have therapy for herself and her children too. So, what comes first? Usually, it's the medical services that come first, and then, if we have time, money, the ability to get there, we'll get to the counseling later. But if we can provide all of those services within one location, if it's an easy just walk over and a warm handoff to another provider, to say, "This is Sarah, she's in need of some services, here's the information, we'll share that through you via our electronic medical record, and oh, by the way, she's also filling out the, the form on the common intake system." Then, you know, let's say that it's a behavioral health agency that's part of that too, then they can start to provide services for her as well, within that location. Let's say that the Department of Human Services is also there, and they discover that, well, in addition to Medicaid, Sarah might even qualify some other programs, but she's got to be able to sit down and fill out that, and talk to a counselor, or, or a caseworker, so that they can determine what's the best route for her to get the services that are in need. It's those kinds of things. When people have to choose to go from point A to point B, and they don't have the resources to get there, they will often go on what's the greatest need available. And for Sarah, it's probably going to be her son, or her, her child that is disabled. For others, it just might be that, you know, it's like, "I can only go to the Health Department. I can't go to the laboratory to get a test run, so I'm only going to go to the Health Department." We see that happen all the time too. Or it could be that, you know, "I need the pills more than I need the counseling, so I'm only going to get the pills." It's those types of things. So, if we can bring providers together, if we can have them do comprehensive services together, and force them, well, force is kind of a strong word, but really to, to get them to integrate services and be more innovative, then we can more effectively meet the needs of our constituents here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. You know, Joel, of course, I agree with the concept of everything. Where the issue comes with me is, we just ended an ownership with a high rise that we owned. I don't know that the county should be becoming the bearer of another project. That's what I struggle with. So, I'm hoping that maybe, and who knows, I mean, we don't have a lot of buildings or structures that would be able to bring all these different entities under one roof, or somewhat in, in one specific area. So, that's going to be a challenge, I think. So, again, my, my concern is us having ownership after we've just gotten out from underneath one.
It's very much understood that the county could become real estate-rich and cash-poor. That's not our intention. Our intention is to leverage resources from other organizations within the community to help share that ownership and burden those costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yeah, just thinking out loud, you know, in the county, trying to find a parcel, or a building, or something, are we able to utilize any of the fairgrounds? Because there's quite a lot, quite a bit of property there, centrally located.
I, I think that there's a, on one hand, if we strictly look at the real estate listings, you might say, "Oh, there's not a lot out there." But on the other hand, having those conversations with providers, and, and talking to them, and some of them have property, and it might be the county has property at the fairgrounds, or it could be a thing of, maybe there, there's some property that exists, or even someone would like to donate something. I think the possibilities are endless, but I think the devil is really in the details in getting together with the other potential partners and coming up with the solution on that. So, I hesitate to say it's this property, that property, or the other thing, because once I start to mention that, then the bidding war goes up within the community, because it is a hot market.
It doesn't go up. It's on our property though.
Yeah. So, but, all that being said, as I've mentioned before, it behooves us to go and have these conversations with other partners.
You know, I, I think anytime we can help people, it's, it's a good thing. And I think this money is intended for that. I don't, I guess we'd have to discuss it probably at some point and come back, but allocating $9 million for a period of time, no. I mean, we got, we got to spend this within three years.
Yeah.
So, if this project that you are talking about doesn't ramp up in a, in a heck of a hurry...
I, it's seven months to bring it back to its fruition.
Is that what you're asking for, seven months?
Yeah. You know, by the end of this year. Well, you know, seven months in reality, really, if you want to have this decision made by December, it really has to be solidified beginning in, by fall, you know, so that there can be a vote on this by the end of the year. So, you know, we've made it pretty clear on there that we want to be able to have this opportunity by the end of the year to get people together. It's a pretty steep uphill climb for me, I totally understand. But I think, you know, right now, what we've got is, we've got an opportunity, and we need to make the most out of that opportunity.
So, a couple things. So, you're asking for a commitment?
Yes.
Okay. And so, then, then you would have time to pursue these other people to possibly commit?
Yes.
And then, at that end time, if that wasn't possible, then...
Then we come back, say, "It didn't work out the way that we planned it, and here might be alternative A, B, or C. And if it doesn't work out, if we find out that by, say, summertime, that this isn't working out, then we'll come back sooner with alternatives."
And I, and I have one more. We spoke before, at another meeting, where you talked about the number of providers in Bay County, and how that looks right now.
Yes.
Could you give us a little more information on that?
Sure. So, the, the provider-to-population ratio is an important indicator of how well a community can respond to its medical needs. Ideally, you'd want to have about 1 to 800, 1 to 900, so one provider, one MD, or a DO for every 800 to 900 people. Right now, in, in Midland, where, you know, things are a lot more plentiful over there, it's about 1 to 1,100. And you go to Saginaw, it's about 1,1600. In Bay County, it is about 1 to 2,500. And that gulf has been growing more and more. About four years ago, we were 1 to 1,800 people. Once we get to 1 to 3,000, that puts us into a whole new class called a medically underserved area. And while the benefits of a medically underserved area mean that you can have enhanced Medicaid reimbursement, it also means that you are on par with some third-world nations, or things like... or things like Indian reservations or really poor rural and inner-city locations where there are just not enough providers. It's not something that we're striving for. In fact, we're trying to get to just the opposite of that. And a center like this can help alleviate some of the stress that you see from the lack of providers on the hospital. And a good example of that would be with COVID. There are a number of people that are told by their provider, "Don't come in here for services. Go to the emergency room." So the emergency room gets all filled up with people that believe that they have COVID. They've got to get tested, and maybe they've got to get treatment. You know, before, when monoclonal antibodies were more prevalent, they were maybe able to get some of that treatment done there. But in the meantime, for every three people that are going to the emergency room because of their COVID symptoms or their complications due to COVID, there's an equal number of people that actually do need to get the emergency room, whether it's because of a traumatic event, whether it's a car accident, or maybe it's an act of violence or an assault or something like that, or maybe it's a heart attack or a stroke. And every time the doctors and nurses have to treat people with COVID, that's less time to treat with some of these other problems that are happening as well. And I mentioned before, too, you know, we're seeing surgeries get canceled because people are exposed to COVID, or maybe they've had COVID and they haven't had the sufficient time to recuperate from that. So being able to provide a service like this has a lot of potential in taking a lot of the pressure off of hospital and other medical providers within the community.
Joel, how do you see it, the whole, like, thing unfolding as far as the steps going through to get to that, to get to the point where you go see your, "Who's going to be my partners?" Or do you go, "Are you looking for a building? Is it simultaneous?" Or, you know, how's it coming together?
Well, it is kind of a simultaneous action, Mr. Chairman. So we're always keeping an eye on potential locations and what's available. But we're also having these conversations throughout the community. And part of that, too, is that having that commitment there, the sooner that we have that commitment, the more likely that we will see realized commitment from other organizations within the community. Now, I had a conversation with a provider today that said, "Hey, we could locate this program there and this program there, but you got to go to the Board of Commissioners and get that commitment before we have a further discussion from that." Because they've got to go to their board or their leadership and be able to provide that information. And nobody is going to step forward if it's just kind of this idea that's out there without any formal commitment.
So this is step one?
This is step one.
Okay. Anyone else?
This is the presentation, though. Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coonan.
Well, at some point, you know, we don't want to waste any time at this. I think at some point, we need to make a decision just so that you can get a rule on this. I don't think we want to wait another month.
If we can make that decision today, that makes my life a little bit easier.
Well, maybe that's something that we can discuss and the full board. Well, this is the full board. We've got a special. To me, I'll make that motion that we give you the $9 million to get started on this and give you to the end of the year, seven months, to bring it back to us and the information of the various providers. I still think, you know, like you said, we don't want to tell anybody where we're going to do this because the price of the property goes up. But we got property, and we should use as much bank for our pocket as we can for these dollars to provide help to other people. So I'll make that motion if anybody wants to-
I'll support it.
Can we?
Can, I think, I think with the, and I don't, we'll find out in a second. I think the appropriate thing to do, we have to have a board meeting next week after the personnel meeting. We could put this whole thing in writing and bring it back for the full board next week. Is that be appropriate, would you say, ma'am?
The board can refer it according to the board rules. You should have any motion that you're presenting in writing before it's debated and voted on.
So yes?
Yes.
Okay. With that, Commissioner Coonan, does that sound logical to you?
I can go with it next week. I don't have a problem.
Should we refer it to next week? Should we put in there the 9.36 so that we include the other pieces? Is that, the 9 is just for the fact, 9.36 would be for the additional, with the 60 and the 300,000 for the community connection piece?
Are we all good with that? Sound good? Commissioner, Mr. Barsha, is yours?
Well, I was just going to thank Joel for the effort he's put into collaborating with other agencies and also the research he's done. Hopefully, if you can bring in more partners, would you see that envision, that $9 million commitment coming down?
It could potentially do that, yeah. I mean, there's a lot of different factors that go into this. But if we get, you know, seed money is seed money, and things grow. And as you get more resources, you will see expenses go down.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you, Joel.
Any motion to receive this?
Yeah. I just have one point of clarification. I believe you just have to allocate or appropriate the money. You don't have to spend the money. So, I mean, as long as we allocate it or appropriate, whatever the term is, we don't have to spend the money in that three-year or four-year term.
The money from ARPA has to be allocated by December of 2025 and spent by December of 2026.
Okay. Commissioner Coonan?
I don't know if we want to receive it. I think we want to refer it to next, next week? We have a full board meeting?
Is that what we're doing?
I don't think that you have to refer it because there hasn't, this was just a presentation to receive. So this would be a new motion and a new resolution at the full board meeting.
Okay.
So it'll be on the agenda then?
Yes.
It should be on the agenda, yes.
I'll make the motion to receive then. Support.
All in favor. Joel, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That was very informative. On where do we go? Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm not going to skip. I see it. The City of Bay City, an application for an absolute rehabilitation exemption certificate that can be from Kennedy Construction Consultant LLC, so 106 Southland Street.
Support. Any discussion? Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. Do we know what they're actually going to do at that location?
They never tell us. They just send us the certificates for some reason.
Commissioner Coonan?
Well, I think I asked the question and it never got answered last week or last month on the other, on the other, this all comes from the city.
It does, and it comes from the Absolute Property Rehabilitation Act, which is PA 146 and 2000. The property in question must be located in an established obsolete property rehabilitation district. That's in the city. The exemptions for taxes that are approved for a term of 1 to 12 years is determined by the local unit of government. Again, that's by the city. The property taxes for the rehabilitated property are based on the previous years prior to rehabilitation taxable value, and the taxable value is frozen for the duration of the exemption. Once the city receives that application, they can approve, they apply with the assessor, they can approve the application. It then goes on to the state. The state is the one that actually issues the certificate, and it comes back to the county to receive it. So we have notification for the tax rules.
And I think the question I asked last month was, if the piece of property, if it's taxable, let's say 100,000 this year, and they put a million into it, so they'll get-
It stays at 100,000.
For a period of year. Do they ever get back with us?
One to 12 years.
Do they ever get back to us on that kind of information or not?
If they get back to us, it's not to the board formally. I don't know if, I'm assuming that they would be listed in the assessor's office.
All right.
Any other discussion? Seeing that, all in favor. Posed, motion carries. Next, we have from the Ways and Means Committee, Commissioner Fox.
Number 2022-22, the Pink County Area School Resource Officer. I move this resolution. Am I saying all English?
I'm sorry. Sidebar.
Moved and supported.
All in favor.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you.
Number 2022-23, the replacement of the total patrol part. I move this resolution. Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Krieger.
And the totals. So the insurance has given us back basically 18,000 or 19,000.
21, I think they gave us 21, they're putting in 18, right?
I'm just curious on why we're sticking, you know, is that normally what we've had when we have a vehicle totaled out?
I know, when I talked to, I asked the sheriff last week, he goes, "That's for the price of the new, the equipment they have to put back in."
So 18,000 in equipment. So we can't take the equipment that was in the vehicle that was totaled and move it into the new vehicle?
That, I don't know. And I will admit to that. But he said, he said, "This is what, he said, "That's what the price is." And, you know, that's kind of my thought, unless it got all smashed up in the wreck, and I don't know.
Maybe, maybe for next week, if we can find that information. I was just curious on why it was so expensive.
Yeah, Commissioner Johnson.
Now, this may not be the case, but we just had something like this happen in Hampton Township. And so what happened is they had to get all the equipment because with the vehicle, the old equipment, even though most of it was still usable, would not fit in the vehicle. So there was no way for them to actually be able to repurpose the stuff that they had in the old vehicle. They had to purchase new because it's the way it's fitted in the vehicle. Have no idea whether that's the case in this space.
Well, the support on last week's Ways and Means, it's the souped-up engine, auto transmission, valve, vinyl, power windows, camera, power seats, pre-drilled holes in the front headlamp housing, global locks, dark car, dual light spots, side mirrors through the sentry, grille wiring, rear door lock.
I put everything you just listed, with the exception of some poles and some wiring, would have been standard features. I mean, but maybe that's a conversation that I can take up with the sheriff and then share with everybody to find out why it's an extra 18,000.
And I know what you're saying, and I know what Commissioner Johnson's saying, too, that I remember something, I heard that before, that the same equipment doesn't fit in the same, in the new vehicle. It's all different. And they do that, I think, so you spend more money.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Resolution 2022-24, the Memorial Patrol Safety Program. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
2022-25, the patrol vehicle purchased by Pink County Township. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Number 2022-26, the Boys and Girls Club Summer Recreation Program for 2022. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Number 2022-27, acceptance of the grant award for in-home service providers. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Number 2022-28, the tire shredder agreement. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
2022-29, the purchase of insecticides. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
2022-30, the light trap data contracts. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
2022-31, the purchase of the Memorial Day flags. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. So Craig, in past years, have we've always spent $2,500 for flags?
Historically, the ask was around 3,000. So in conversation at the Veteran Affairs Committee, realistically, we did bring that down based on the use. Sometimes flags can be reused, but then others-
Well, that's my question. I know that every year, they go back and collect all these flags. So how do we have to keep spending $2,500 every year? Do we just get rid of all the flags that we collected? I'm just curious on how we justify every year, 2,500, 2,500. We must have a room full of flags someplace that's not being used.
I mean, that's hard to answer. There's so many veteran organizations, some are better than others at recollecting them and repurposing them. It's a, always a contentious, animated conversation when this is brought up, especially during our, on our Veteran Affairs Committee meeting. I think what we could look at doing, you know, next year, getting an accurate count, what we have, change that amount, if, you know, if possible.
Well, why I'm bringing this up is a year ago, when this all came up, I thought that, you know, spirited conversation was to get a better handle on what we had and not continue to order the same amount year after year. So I'm just wondering if that's been resolved. I mean, Vaughn's on that.
No.
Chair's-
I believe we have a person that's going to be doing some research for us, a position with our grant money, to look at the cemeteries that we have, if we're, for one, and see how they're supplied. There is some wear and tear. We did bring it down from 3,000, was, I guess, a compromised position, hotly debated. But we will have the new person to maybe give us a better reflection on how many flags we use, how many are usable again for following year.
So maybe, maybe next year, if I'm still here, somebody can give us a total of why we keep spending 2,500. We can't be losing all those flags after the end of Memorial Day. Thank you.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yeah, it says, "As millage funds cannot be used for this purpose." Who's the expert on what millage funds can be used for?
That would be me. I don't know if I would call myself an expert, but I'm the one who gave that legal opinion.
Pardon?
I'm the one who gave that legal opinion.
Well, what can millage funds be used for?
Emergency services for indigent veterans.
Indigent being the key word.
And emergency as well.
Emergency, yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Number 2022-32, the pest removal services. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Krieger.
Sorry, Craig. So we have somebody coming in to figure out or get rid of the pest. Are they also proactive in trying to figure out where they're coming in at so we can stop it from happening?
Absolutely. That was, that was part of the conversation, and they've done a walk-around. And that'll be probably a collaborative effort between, with buildings and grounds as well as this company.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any more?
Perhaps we could release some cats.
That's the other part. That'd have been a little cheaper. All in favor? Posed, motion carries.
Number 2022-33, the general unpayables. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four, the Office Depot account contract, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five, the Staples account contract, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six, the agreement with Crowell for the endpoint detection response software, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven, the two-factor authentication for added security, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight, the Crowell Information Security and Computer Service Agreement, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine, the MDHHS I of LR Grant, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. That's it, Dave?
My work is done, Chair.
Hey, good job, thank you, we have nothing from Personnel and Human Services, because we covered that off, from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Begic.
So I don't have it in front of me, but it must be twenty twenty-two dash forty, I'll move the report of the county executive.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Krieger.
Yeah, just, just curious, under employees that have returned that are part-time, is there a set up amount of hours that they're actually going to be employed, you know, I see Matt Burley came back as a part-timer, which was great, he was an asset for us, how many hours can he work?
One thousand hours annually.
One thousand for the year?
Yeah, so he is filling in for somebody who's off on a sickening accident right now.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Commissioner Begic? That's it? Okay, so reports of officials, county officials, county executive.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, first of all, had I brought my cellphone in, I could have indicated to you earlier in the agenda, that Ryan Tarrant had texted me asking me to explain to the board, he's been out sick for two days, and it kind of slipped his mind about this, but he, yeah, just before four o'clock, he texted me and indicated that he'd rescheduled at the pleasure of the board, and I would like to say that Commissioner Fox and Ryan and myself and some other individuals had a conversation with Jason Allen, former Rural Development Director, and also Tony Stamas about Michigan Connect, so we're making progress on what we need to do to move forward on addressing our broadband, you know, critical issue, two of the major issues, I think we agree, are right-of-way, so Bay County Road Commission would be one agency that would have that, Consumers Energy also would have access to right-of-way to lay the fiber and the equipment necessary for expanding broadband, however, there's an issue there that they may be reluctant to be involved in, and we need to select a fiduciary that would handle the grant money, federal grant money for broadband, and then negotiate with the companies to actually do the work and install the, the broadband fiber, if that's where we're going, Midland County's a little ahead of Bay County, and they've, they, they contracted with an organization called Michigan Connect, which has a, a real good track record, and also appreciate the board, I think everybody was pleased to hear that we made a substantial financial commitment to look at getting a, you know, a needs assessment done for Bay County, so that would be a, you know, a plan to go forward, to see what exactly we have to do to, to achieve this access to the internet to all Bay County residents, and then if I could, I'd like to also mention, I've been engaged in some conversation with Tom Albert, who chairs the House Committee on Appropriations in Lansing, and our local legislators about seeing if Bay County could be designated, and also talking with Joel, to see if Bay County could be a designated site for one of seven statewide clinics that would allow early intervention and prescription of medications, the latest approved medications, to address early in the symptom stage COVID-infected residents of Bay County, or, or beyond our Bay County borders as well, we know from MedStar's experience here, that the monoclonal antibody infusions have been, had a dramatic impact on Delta, the Delta variant, and there are medications, I've talked to some residents who, early on in the symptoms, they got pills of five day, I think a five pill regimen, and they avoided serious illness, didn't need to be hospitalized, and of course, we could avoid, you know, the ultimate death as a result of COVID infection, so there'd be seven sites statewide, and the proposal, I think several hundred million dollars available, and it has passed the House, suspending the Senate, but that's something we can look into, because I think most people who have, who are willing to be vaccinated at this point have been inoculated, and we have some that are very hesitant for a variety of reasons, they don't want to get vaccinated, but we don't want to lose them either, we don't want them to get very sick and hospitalized and possibly lose their life, so that's something that I'll keep everyone informed about and see if, if anything can come of that, also, I want to just mention, next week, we will see the rollout of TextMyGov, a widget on the county website, which will be a powerful tool to increase access to our county's elected officials, various county departments and programs in a customer-friendly manner, and within the next several days, we will start promoting it, and I want to thank Julie Coppins from our IT department for her leadership and work on this, as well as former county clerk Cindy Luzak for helping to secure and implement this exist, this exciting new technology in enhancing communication and services to our county residents, and that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Yes.
If we could go back to reports of the county exec, so we can vote on it. Oh, sorry.
What about?
We didn't vote.
The what?
It was moved and supported, we never voted.
Okay.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty.
I didn't do that? Twenty twenty-two dash forty, I didn't take a vote, eh?
No.
Let's, let's do it now, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries, thank you.
I just have one other point, I did talk to Joel before the meeting, he said there's a good supply of the oral medication that they have, the supply of it that, that, you know, it's not being utilized as much as I thought it was, so.
Yes, I've talked, if I can, I've talked to several individuals who, whom some of us know very well, and they got very sick, and when they got the medication, they got better within two to three days, so if we can provide that kind of medication, then medical intervention to, to save people from getting seriously ill and having to be hospitalized, that's in all of our best interests, and, you know, so thank you.
Okay, so move on to unfinished business, there's bonus for frontline county employees.
Oops.
Commissioner Krieger.
So if we can go back to unfinished business a second, I know Craig, we talked last month about the neutering and spating of the animals, you were going to come back on what was that total for twenty twenty-one?
I brought a lot of information, but not that, so I will bring that, I will make a commitment to bring that to next week's bulletin board meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go back to the bonus for frontline county employees, Commissioner Coonan.
Yeah, we had some discussions on this, I think, probably was three commissioners to, in a, in a meeting, so we didn't have a quorum, but this is ARPA money, a lot of other communities are providing this bonus for, I guess technically, a lot of folks could be considered frontline employees, so we discussed initially one group, and looking at the semantics of it, how it would be difficult to do one group and not another, we came up, at least in the meeting that I was in, across the board, I think it was a thousand dollars for full-time, five hundred dollars for part-time, that's four or five hundred thousand dollars, about a ten million dollars, that we are able to provide to all of our employees, except the seven of us here, and I'm going to make that motion, we got money, those are good dollars, you know, if you think about economic development, somebody gets a thousand dollars and the, the income, it wades that they're into today, those monies, those monies get spent in the local economy, shoes, clothes, things families need, kids need, so it's good for the economy, it's good for the employees, I kind of wanted this on the agenda, we had all talked about it, I'm not sure what anybody else's feeling is, a lot of other communities are doing it, and if somebody gets some feedback that's negative, you know what, we're paid, you know, we were elected to make some tough decisions, and so I'm going to make that motion that we will proceed with a thousand dollars for full-time employees, five hundred for part-time employees, and that's for everybody except the seven of us.
I'll support it.
And we'll have more discussion, my, my biggest problem with it is, I think of the guy, it says ARPA is all for, not just for Bay County, it's Bay County employees, it's for everybody, and I think of the guy that I watched, that lives down in the South End, that's been limp, and he works at Kroger, has not missed a day of work in three years, and I think, and boy, what are we doing for him, and I think we're not doing much for him, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea, I just don't think it's a real good one at this time, so I'm, I'm probably not going to be in favor of it for that reason, I just like, I like, you know, it's, it's a countywide thing, that's my, that's my thing with, with ARPA money, you know, we can do help, we're talking about, we talked about health, the Health Department and what we can do with that, and, and all the people who helped, and I think, you know, our employees did a great job, but so did everybody else, people worked at McDonald's did a great job too, you know, they didn't make very much money, but they did a great job, and the people, you go, so pick your spot, you know, that's, I'm just picking, I pick anywhere, they all did a great job, you know, anybody worked through this thing for the last couple of years, so for that reason, I would be a no. Commissioner Begic.
Have we defined, the people is going to be everybody's being across the board then, it's not going to be the, the central workers, is what we're talking about, everybody?
Yeah, I don't, I'm struggling with this, the proposal we've had with Joel, some of the other financial commitments, and just kind of this overarching plan, that I'm not sure has come together for me yet, I actually would like to move to refer it to administration, so that can be considered maybe as part of an overall collective bargaining agreement.
Support.
I was going to say, I would support that.
I don't know if you could use ARPA money for collective bargaining?
Want to move it to administration? Can it go anywhere, you, as, where can it go to?
There are specific guidelines for ARPA money being given as.
But I guess what, my question is, what can it be referred to, where can it be?
Oh, I'm sorry, you can refer it to administration if the question is whether or not it qualifies, and if it can be used on for that.
Is it okay, Commissioner Fox?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you still support that, Commissioner Begic? Yes.
Probably a roll call, I guess.
Okay, roll call, ma'am, motion to refer.
Coonan?
No.
Reckie?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Fox?
Yes.
Krieger?
No.
Begic?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes. Motion to refer has passed. Mr. Coppins, did you want to say anything on the unfinished business, I hear, you know, from what our county executive said about the broadband, they said, did you have something that you wanted to say in unfinished business? You can.
So over the last week or so, we've had several meetings about broadband, and one of the things that we had discussed is, we all agree that we need to do something immediately, so there's an organization in Midland called the Midland Business Alliance, the MBA, which is like a combination of our chambers and Bay Future together, and they've hired, they've contracted with Connect Michigan to complete their needs assessment, so one of the things that we had talked about, and Jim had mentioned them, he was speaking, is partnering with them, is we have like needs in Bay County as they do in Midland County, so there's areas in Larkin Township that are similar to Bay County, where there's, I like to call them dead zones, there's completely no broadband available, and so that was one of the reasons why we were looking at to be able to partner with Connect Michigan, and I think if, you know, we're going to move forward, we can communicate with them and, you know, maybe get them in, have a meeting with them to discuss further.
Go to Christopher.
I thought that was the purpose of the RFP, and, and I think there's only a select few organizations that do this, I contacted MAC, they gave me, I talked with them for a little bit, they gave me Connect Michigan, and then they referred me to Dan Manning, who did a assessment for us, it was, and I talked to him on the phone.
Sure.
He's anxious to, you know, in this RFP, hopefully, it was a month ago, hopefully that RFP is going to go out soon, right, for broadband, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a study, ultimately, the end result will be, it'll probably be Connect Michigan, Dan Manning, doing the, the work to determine our, our needs and provide us that assessment, but we have to get that RFP out. I mean, they're not going to do it for nothing, I mean, they might know, they did an assessment in Midland County what they need, we need an assessment in Bay County what we need, that's the purpose of getting the RFP, so the person, if it's Dan Manning who's doing it, he will do it and say, you know what, you can't run fiber everywhere, set, you know, it's just, it's not affordable to run fiber, you might need a tower here or something there, and they're going to provide that to us through the RFP that we're going to put out there, hopefully it goes out there soon, and ultimately, it'll be the same people doing the work, Connect Michigan, they're tied to, they're tied with whatever Dan Manning's organization is, but whoever does that, they should have the opportunity to bid on the work, the scope of work to do, the work we need to do to provide an assessment, so that when those dollars come in, we can say, we need this and this and this based upon this, this study, so I don't know why we would want to, we should do the RFP and not worry about what Midland's doing, it'll probably be the same people doing the work, they work with Midland, we have somebody come in here and do the work for Bay County, and then we can go from there.
I think one of our, our two most knowledgeable people on broadband are, are Finance Director and Julie are probably two best people.
Then, then they should probably tell us what we need.
They, that's, I agree, and I think they would, I think they're going to, I think they're going to probably have a meeting.
We got an RFP going out.
Well, they needed, we need to know what we need before I have an RFP going out, I wouldn't say, I mean, that's what, I mean, that'd be the logical thing, you just, you just don't put an RFP with nothing on it, you gotta know what we need, and they understand a lot of things that I know, I'm one hundred percent sure I don't, you know, and I don't know anybody else here who does, except those two, when they talk about it, I have no idea what they're talking about all the time, but they know what they're talking about, and that's the important thing, and they're the ones that are going to direct us, yes, sir.
I would say the, the piece with the, the big component of the RFP is development of what they call the scope of work, and so the function of actually turning out a RFP and, and the processes laid out in a very deliberate fashion, and that's one piece, but the other piece is the in-depth and hard piece to conquer is developing the scope of work, and that's kind of the guts of the RFP, that lays out what are the specific objectives we want to achieve in this, understanding what, what the Commissioner just said, Julie and I know where our circle of competence lies, in developing a scope of work that will, that will lay a strong foundation for what we want to build as a countywide broadband, to attract partners, is something we don't have, we need to find someone who can write that scope of work, so that, that is the biggest issue, and you kind of, to get the rocket off the ground, is developing that scope of work to lay inside that RFP, and we don't have that knowledge base to do that, so we need to really think about what is the best avenue, and the most expedient avenue, to, to get the expertise in, to help develop the scope of work, and it might not be an RFP process, it, it might be finding a vendor that can write that for us, or group can write that for us and move forward, and, you know, avenue different ways, we need some time to, to really think about what's the most expedient way to write something, we don't have the knowledge base to create that scope of work, it's going to be the foundation in which identifies all the needs, where are the vertical assets in the community, where is existing fiber, what would this look like, how do we best identify all the, the areas in which local municipalities and government need to be involved in streamlined processes to encourage partners in the for-profit world, because they're the ones that's going to build this network, not us, so we need to, to start there, is identify what is the best way to write that, that piece.
So I would, I would task you guys with discovering that.
Have we looked at the previous study that was done a few years back?
Yes.
You got that information?
Yes, there's a number of maps, and some other materials on Connect Michigan, and that's kind of what we looked at, and so we understand, as Julie said, there's dead zones in the county, and there's areas with low broad, low broadband, or really low access to the, to the internet, those are understood at the, at the, not at the granular level, but some really broad strokes, we can understand that, so we understand the problem, but we don't really have the knowledge base to build a scope of work to address the problem, and that's kind of where we're, we're at, and need some time to really think about what's the best way to tackle that problem, so we just don't push out, hey, So we just don't push out, hey, this is going to get an RFP out, we don't know how to put that scope together, and that's going to be super important for us. So if we can get some latitude to come back and say, here's, here's, here would be a plan.
So the RFP probably wouldn't change much from county to county?
No, no, it would not.
For the scope of work?
It would not change much county to county.
So that's.
And they've done extensive knowledge in the mapping. So when we look at the map today, so if you go on the Connect Michigan website, we see the map, and they're all in different colors, but, you know, and I'm just saying Northern Bay County because we know that there's some dead zones there. We need a more in-depth for someone to be able to say, this is really where your areas are affected and the best use of resources to cover those areas.
And that's the purpose of the RFP, to have somebody come in and determine that for us?
Correct, but there's already been a lot of work done with Connect Michigan that they have done it. I feel like we just need a more in-depth information, knowing, gathering from them.
So again, how about if we task you two with gathering that information and you can report back to us? Does that sound logical?
Yeah.
Sure.
We can, if it's okay, I think in broad brushstrokes, reach back to some like communities who've already put something together, see what the avenues they went to approach it, and then come back and say, here would be the most expedient way to do this. I know time is up, the essence. Heard that multiple times, that Bell has been around, and we understand that. It's important to get this moving. And so I just ask for a little bit of time to kind of understand how other communities have approached it and come back at you and say, here are a couple of opportunities for approaches, and this is what you're going to gain from it, and this is what you're giving up based on these different approaches.
Can we all agree with that? I got, especially, especially you. Well, Vaughn's got the same thing, Ernie's got some.
Few areas.
I got some, and Jamie's got some.
Or some.
Casey's got, she's got nobody like that. Nobody. Anyways, all right, thank you. Any new business? Commissioner Begic.
I just had a question about the fees at the Community Center. I got a call, I think some of the other Commissioners did, about volleyball players being charged differently than pickleball players. And I talked to Kristen, I talked to Beth Tron about it, and I don't know if they're going to change the fees or where is that process at, or do we need to vote on it? Because they were charging volleyball players a different amount, like a one-time fee, and then the pickleball players were getting like a monthly fee, which was less.
We got Kristen here.
Yep. Yeah, she is.
To that, thank you. Yes, we have a membership, a pickleball membership on our fee schedule that is approved by the Commission. And this year, there was some addition to volleyball, which wasn't necessarily taking place in the past. And they are asking for the same membership. The way the wording is on the fee schedule, it is very specific to pickleball. So next ways and means I had planned to bring forward a change should just make it a drop-in membership, which would cover both pickleball and volleyball. And that would solve the problem because realistically, they're the same exact thing. It's a drop-in sport that's open when Beth schedules it on the schedule book. And it should be equal, but the way it was worded was directed for pickleball, so we couldn't give it to volleyball without the adjustment. If that makes sense.
Do you need a resolution from us?
Yes, he's going to bring it the way it means he's.
That's meeting, okay.
Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you.
So Kristen, what is the difference between the two?
Nothing really, except the wording in the fee schedule. So pickleball, we have set open gym drop-in for pickleball at the Community Center. We also have open gym drop-in for volleyball. Volleyball never had, in the past, they only did it one time per week, so it was never financially, it was cheaper for them just to pay the drop-in fee as opposed to a monthly membership. And now this year, they had added another, another, another spot that week. And so it's financially beneficial for these volleyball players to now have a membership as opposed to years past. So it's just the wording in the fee schedule, wanting to stay, you know, as close as we can to like exactly what the fee schedule says. I just need a change to the fee schedule wording.
But can you tell me, in the, in the dollar amount, what is the difference between what the two pay?
So drop-in is $4, a drop-in, and a monthly membership is $20 a month.
And that's for pickleball, or is that for volleyball?
Well, it's for pickleball because volleyball doesn't have a monthly membership option yet. But it would be the exact same as pickleball when we make the change.
What are they paying right now?
$4 a drop-in. So every session, they pay $4. And then, as opposed to a monthly one-time fee for the months.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Kristen.
Yep.
Anything else in the new business? Miscellaneous? You hold me. Announcements? Commissioner Begic, Jamie, you got one?
I got, I got one.
Commissioner Johnson?
I told you I'm going to do this every time until we get there. So the Garber Athletic Association, the United Races, for only $50 per person, you can enjoy an evening filled with friends, dinner, open bar, silent auction, and a horse racing, which I'll be interested to see how that works out because it's under grand. And so I'm not sure how they're going to race horses, but that's March 5th, 2022, 5 to 11 p.m.
Anyone else? Any other announcements? Okay, 2022 appointments in March, we have the Bay Area Action Behavior Health Authority, three three-year terms. In June, the Library Board, one five-year term. In October, Land Bank Authority, one township representative for three-year term. And the Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors, one three-year term. And December, the Veteran Affairs Committee, one four-year term. The Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms in districts two, four, six, and then at large. That's it on the announcement appointments. And may I, was there any need for a closed session today?
There is. Mr. Chair, on behalf of the Personnel Director, I would request a motion from a board member to go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268C for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. Included in that closed session would be the board members, the clerk and her representative, the board coordinator, and from Administration, Tiffany and Jerry, the Personnel Director, Chris Zaworski, the Finance Officer, and Amber Davis Johnson, Corporation Counsel.
So move.
We'll look for it.
Roll call, please.
Reckie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Begic?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Herrick?
Yes. Lock the doors, ma'am. We're going in the closed session. Now you're motion to go in regular order of business. So move.
Support.
All in favor? Next motion. Now that's the going regular order of business, Vaughn, don't leave yet. Now, Jamie.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Vaughn, you got to say support. We're journeying. Not yet, until you say, I support it.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Support.